Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, as we gather here this evening, we pause to give you thanks and praise for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We ask your blessing upon everyone here this evening, upon our families and businesses in this parish in which we live, and this nation. May your Holy Spirit guide us to make decisions that are pleasing in your sight, oh Lord. In a special way, let us remember C.J. Bello from Iowa, a student who's fighting for his life. We pray for him and his family this evening. And we ask all of these favors in your son's name, Jesus Christ our Lord and Redeemer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pond.
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please, Ms. Wallace.
Mr. Amshar is unavailable tonight. Mr. Andrew Pond?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Ms. Easton?
Here.
Mr. Hillary?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markantel?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelling?
Here.
President Barris?
Here, thank you. All right, item one. Present, one A, presentation of certificates to local competitors of the, in the 2025 National Junior High and High School Finals Rodeo. First of all, regarding this item, I want to say to the parents, well done. I know it's a full-time job, and I know you all work, because last I checked, rodeo ain't free. Or by any means cheap. So congratulations on getting your children, your young rodeo athletes, to and from everything safely. That's a big deal. George Strait had a quote in one of his songs, "When you're on top, you got a million friends. Buddy, when you're down, you're on your own." Well, I know right now y'all all got a million friends, because y'all have done well. And y'all would not be here if you didn't. Welcome back home. I know it's been a long summer, a long year, and what, you probably, raise your hand if y'all have already started on next season. About ready, y'all fixing to start going again, I imagine. So, you know, that says a lot for every one of you, and I know you're going to be better, better parents, brothers, husbands, sisters, mothers, because of it. I would like to invite Mr. Guy Murphy, Louis iana High School Rodeo Association President.
Thank you. I first wanted to thank y'all for everything y'all do for us, and the police jury helps us a ton. And thank you. I want to personally thank y'all. And we've got Alex Poole to give a little rundown for y'all.
On behalf of all the national qualifiers here, thank you for inviting us tonight. It was an honor to represent Calhoun Parish and the state Louisiana this summer. We are very grateful for many years of both financial and in-kind support from the Calhoun Parish Police Jury and the help from the parish administrator and staff. Please accept this plaque as a thank you from over 300 junior high and high school members of the Louisiana High School Rodeo Association.
All right, so first of all, I know everybody's got places to be, and we appreciate y'all coming. We really do. We definitely, I know we waited a while to do the announcement, but like I said, a bunch of y'all just got back. So, again, appreciate y'all for coming. For the National Junior High Finals Rodeo, placed right down the road from you in Des Moines, Tony, oh, that's Iowa. These are our folks who placed at the Nationals. Mr. Jesse James Gunner, fifteenth in the world, chew dogging. You can, y'all can just stand up, because we're going to get y'all certificates right after the meeting, but right after this. And next, in the bareback, Barrett Prince, fifth in the world. And for our National High School Finals, our placing contestants in Rock Springs, Wyoming, Will Gunner, ninth in the world steer wrestling. And Mr. Ty Laverne, 2025 World Champion Bull Rider. And I know Ty, I talked to his daddy last night, and the football game, the boys that, you know, like a lot, a bunch of y'all probably do multiple things. So that is totally understandable. And so, again, congratulations to y'all. So here's all our qualifiers for the Junior High Finals. Ms. Kennedy Bello, Brenly Huffman, Brenly Martin, Preston Martin, Wayland Martin, Slate McCortle, and Davis And for our, excuse me, our High School Finals qualifiers, Ms. Lakin Jones, Ella K., Kenzie King, Wyatt Laverne, Colburn Ledoux, Kane Martin, Alex Poole, Briar Prince, Casey Prince, Ms. Stephanie Rodrieg, would you like to say anything?
I'm just very grateful for the opportunity.
When's the last time you turned down an opportunity to talk?
Thank you so much. I can only echo what Guy said. It's been many, many years that the Calhoun Parish Police Jury has supported the Louisiana High School Rodeo Association. We were thrilled for many years to be at Burton Coliseum, and then we were very fortunate to then move to the West Calorina for COVID and then the hurricane repairs. And now we're back at Burton Coliseum. We do feel like it's our home, but it's only our home because you make that possible for our state finals. So again, many thanks for supporting not only these outstanding members, but as Alex said, over 300 members. That's how far your support extends. So again, many thanks. We're happy to represent you. And I think at this time, you wanted the entire members for a picture. Yes. So if we can have all of our cowboys and cowgirls make your way to the front for a group picture, please. And then you give them the plaque to keep. And we have some others of our board members here. Josh Martin, Stony Martin, and Dee Whit Poole are also with us.
Thank you.
Hey, Joe, I'd like to say a comment. I'd like to, before y'all leave, before everybody leaves, I just want to say that Southwest Louisiana has got a strong, rich tradition in rodeo. When you look back over the years at middle school, high school, and the professional level, it's generational. It's a wholesome sport. And I want to thank all of you for carrying the tradition here of representing Southwest Louisiana, and hopefully for many more years to come. So congratulations.
All right. We'll take a little pause. Y'all can go. Right out there, Ms. Kay's got something for y'all. Thank y'all again for coming.
Thank y'all.
Martin had about seven, of course, he's got like 80 grand.
All right, moving right along. Item two A, and please let the record reflect that I will be recusing myself from this item. Adopt a resolution appointing a candidate to complete the unexpired term of Dr. Terry Welke, former coroner of Calhoun Parish. Mr. Bowlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a little history prior to us proceeding on this item. On July 2nd, we received official notice from the Secretary of State that Dr. Welke had submitted his resignation effective August 11th, 2025, at 12:01 PM. The Secretary of State instructed the police jury regarding the steps and timeline that we needed to fill this vacancy. It included a couple of things. One, the police jury must know later than July 22nd, proclaim a vacancy in the position of the coroner of Calhoun Parish, and call a special election to be held in the spring of 2026. A special meeting was held on Thursday, July 17th, and at 5:30, and the election was called. Secretary of State also instructed the police jury that they have 20 days or no later than August 31st to appoint an interim coroner. If not, the governor would make that appointment at that time. Police jury liaisons and staff begin this process, which included informational meetings and discussions with several interested people. We are now here tonight to take action to appoint an interim Calhoun Parish coroner. And so with that, I will turn it over back to you, Mr.
President. Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move that we appoint Dr. Joseph Dressler, interim coroner.
A second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pond to appoint Mr. Dr. Dressler, and seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions? Any discussion that item carries?
Mr. Dressler, Dr. Dressler, would you, would you come to the podium, please?
How's y'all doing? So it's an honor to be here.
Go ahead and move around where you can get that microphone going.
Oh, you can do that? You can talk to us? Okay. So, Dr. Joseph Dressler, for those that don't know me, born and raised in Lake Trolls, did my, went to high school at Barb, and undergrad LSU, graduated marketing, and I came on, met my wife there. She's from DeRider, Courtney, and was in sales for nine years with Merck Pharmaceuticals, and then felt the Lord calling us to medicine. And that's when I applied for medical school and finished up my master's in business at McNeese. And we moved to Shreveport, and I went to med school at LSU Shreveport, and then did my residency training in family medicine here in Lake Trolls. And ever since then, I've been with Memorial Hospital, working as a hospitalist, including residency, seven, eight years about. And, you know, always planned to stay in this area when I'm not working. I'm with my kids. I have daughter, she's a junior, Maggie, at Barb, and my other daughter, freshman at Barb. Our son, who we adopted when he was three, he's six now, sitting over there, Max, from Taiwan. And in two months, we'll get a brother and sister, a four-year-old and a two-year-old from there in a couple of months. So we'll have a full house again. But that's a little bit about me, and I appreciate y'all's consideration and an honor to be here and honored to serve.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Dressler, are you the Kansas address?
Yes, that's my father. Yes.
Turned brother-in-law.
Right.
Can you play golf?
I do.
Pretty good, too.
I mean, okay.
Nice meeting you, Doc.
Nice to meet you.
Mr. Andrew Pond? Want to congratulate you. You did very good in your interview, and I know you're very interested. I know you'll do a good job. And I can guarantee you that there's a number of funeral homes and others are eager for you to go to work. I'm sure you'll have, when you get there, you got a stack of papers to get into. But congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could get Mr. Andrew Pond, Mr. Barti, and Mr. Smith to take a picture with Dr. Dressler? a picture with Dr. Dressler?
Congratulations. Thanks, good seeing you. Congratulations. Yes. dated July 24th, 2025. Motion by Mr. Landry, seconded by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Two C, approve the minutes of the special meeting of the police jury dated July 17th, 2025. Motion by Mr. Bowers, seconded by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Three A, adopt a resolution approving an act of sale with temporary construction servitude agreement for the Ham Reid Road Extension Project Phase Two. Motion by Ms. Eason and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Three B, adopt a resolution approving a permanent public records facility servitude agreement for the East Calhoun Parish Consolidated Water Works Project. Motion by Mr. Stelly, seconded by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Three C, adopt a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and co-part of Louisiana for improvements to parish right of way south of US Highway 90 at Fawbacher Road. Motion by Mr. Bowers and seconded by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Three D?
Move on three D.
Adopt a resolution approving a permanent utility servitude agreement for the Old Spanish Trail water line upgrade project. Motion by Mr. Burley and seconded by Mr. Gilery. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Three E, adopt a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application for the Hubs for Energy Resilient Operations Program for the development of an integrated community energy plan. Motion by Mr. Quinn and seconded by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Three F?
Move on.
Adopt an ordinance approving a lease for 969 Terry Lane, Lake Charles, which must remain open space property. Motion by Mr. Landry and seconded by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item four A, approve applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends approval of the new application and ratification of the special event permit.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Barti, seconded by Mr. Andrew Ponce. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Four B, authorize the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on October 2nd, 2025, as to why the structures on the properties, as stipulated, should not be condemned. One, 5940 Benny Lane, Lake Charles. Two, 7768 Saval Street, Hayes. And number three, for 1150 Pecan Street to Quincy. I'll entertain a motion to move on all bullets. Mr. Landry makes that motion, and Mr. Markantel seconds. Any discussion? Any objections? That item carries. Five A, adopt a resolution approving a grant agreement for the Workforce Innovations and Opportunity Act Title I Funding Allocation. Motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Move on six A. Six A, approve payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons on the general fund. Motion by Mr. Andrew Ponce and seconded by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Six B?
Move on six.
Advertise for bids for the Israel LaFleur Park Hurricane Repairs Project. I have a motion by Ms. Eason and a second by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion? Mr. Landry?
I do have a question. I guess maybe Dean can answer. He popped up right when we needed you, Danny. Must have been standing outside.
Automatic.
What is this going to, just, you don't have to go in tons of detail, but roughly, what is it going to consist of, and what's the timeline?
I got a question about this today.
Okay. So this is the hurricane repair project in there. We will repair the fishing wharf, the bulkhead, boat launch, the ramp, reclaim the eroded north side of the peninsula, and also protect it with a continuation of the sheet pile wall and installation of drainage to mitigate future erosion issues.
And the timeline?
Also landing for the kayaks, right?
Kayak launches in there, I skipped over it. Timeline, you know, we get through bidding, it'll be, it'll be a longer duration project. I can't give the exact months, but it'll be eight months to a year, I imagine.
Before I retire?
I sure hope so. I hope it would have been done by now, but we've had a difficult process to work through, roughly, I believe.
Less than a year. You can probably promise me that, right?
I'm not promising anything.
That's rough.
We have a FEMA tag on this, that it's like Dragon Anchor, but we're pushing it as hard as we can, and we're not going to give up on it.
So the question today was, yeah, when are we going to do it, and kind of what has taken so long, so we can blame it on FEMA, is what you're telling me?
I don't like to blame anybody, but that is the truth. We have some insurance money, we have some local money, but we are, we have been working very closely with FEMA to get through all of this process. So in order to get FEMA funding, you have to go this route, and it's extremely long.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. All right. Six C, advertise for requests for qualifications for engineering and technical services for the Mallard Junction Ground Storage Replacement Project. Motion by Mr. Stelly and seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries.
Mr. President, if, we can go back to six B, I don't think we actually took action on that one.
Okay. I think we had a motion by Ms. Eason and a second by Mr. Bowers on that. I'm not, correct? Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries now.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Six D?
Move on six D.
Second. Advertise for bids for thoroughfare roads and drainage rehabilitation. Motion by Mr. Markantel, seconded by Mr. Hayes. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries.
Move on six D.
Second. Six E, advertise for bids for West Calhoun Parish roads and drainage rehabilitation. Motion by Mr. Burley, seconded by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Six F, action on bids for signed faces and sheeting materials. Staff recommends the bids of Osborne Associates, Sign Solutions USA, and Vulcan Signs be accepted. Motion by Mr. Barti, seconded by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Six G, action on bids for ready-mix concrete. Staff recommends the bid of Dunham Price be accepted.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Barti and seconded by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Six H?
Move on six H.
Adopt a resolution accepting Ginger Lane Drainage Improvements Projects as substantially complete. Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Stelly. And you, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely want to thank the engineering staff, all the people that worked on this, because this was actually one of my bucket lists since I got elected. I know the church is very happy, and the residents are very happy in that area. So once again, I want to thank everybody that was involved with this, because like I say, this has been going on for a while, and we finally got it complete, and everybody's really satisfied out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Six J?
Move on six I.
Excuse me, six I, adopt a resolution accepting pavement preservation on various roads in Calhoun Parish as substantially complete. A motion by Mr. Markantel, seconded by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Six J, adopt a resolution accepting striping of various roads as substantially complete. Motion by Mr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Seven is an advised item, and item eight? Move adjourned.
Second.